Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Euclid Board of Education meeting. It is March 11, 2013. I'd like to ask you to join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a little up?
Oh, yeah. Please call the roll.
This is DeAngelis.
Here.
This is Lysy.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
This is Sudar.
Here.
This is Van Hoof. All members are present.
I'd like to have a motion, please, to adopt the minutes for February 4th, 11th, 25th, and 2013. So moved by Mrs. DeAngelis.
Second.
By Mrs. Lysy. I'll call the roll.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
Mr. Smith, do we have a legislative liaison report this evening?
Yes, Vice President Sudar. Couple of things. Again, the state budget process is unfolding. I've got a bit of an update on that. Before that, and again, it is Monday, March 11, the federal sequestration went into effect, what, four days ago, five days ago, something like that?
Week or two ago.
Week ago, Friday? And there is some education funding that could affect our district that is possibly in peril, but I suppose if there's good news on this, those cuts will not be implemented until next school year, so about six months from now. Specifically, the types of funds that we're looking at and we're trying to watch just how these negotiations unfold are Title I funds and Title VI B funds. And it's not known exactly how those allocations will be reduced. That will be, those decisions will be made by the United States Department of Education. I'd like to credit Superintendent Bell for digging through the federal information and try to add some clarity to that, but again, we will keep the community apprised as it unfolds. Okay, so state budget stuff. The governor introduced his budget, give or take, around February 4. The House Finance Committee has it, and they will essentially look it over until, give or take, April 15. The House bill, the budget bill, is known as House Bill 59. And the primary and secondary education, there's a committee in the Ohio House called the Primary and Secondary Education Finance Subcommittee, and they are hearing testimony starting tomorrow and are scheduled to have testimony Tuesday, the 12th, Wednesday, the 13th, and Thursday, the 14th. There may be more testimony after that, but just so you know that the educational allocation is being discussed right now. And again, 400 of the 613 public school districts in the proposed budget are currently flatlined with their source of revenue, so I would anticipate that there are going to be revenue changes as the process unfolds. And again, it'll go to the House Finance Committee, then the entire House will pass the bill, it'll go over to the Senate, the Senate Finance Committee, and then eventually there will be a reconciliation committee to work out the differences between the House version and the federal version with the governor signing the bill around June 30. So again, it'll be a very active next four-month period of time, and the Euclid schools, you know, we will keep you apprised as we can. The thing to keep in mind is there's a couple of different wild, so that's, one of the things that we need to be looking at and the community needs to be aware of is there's two sides of the budget. There's the revenue side, and then there's the expenditure side. And as of right now, the Euclid City Schools have a relatively healthy allocation of revenue if you just look at the current budget. Now, if you look at this budget, which is a two-year budget, and the last budget, which is a two-year budget, it's actually not that healthy. We lost about $5 million as compared to the, in the budget we're operating under as compared to the budget that we had three and four years ago. Policy Matters Ohio did a study in November 2012 on the impact of the current budget, which we were under until June 30. And some of the impacts in Cuyahoga County were that school systems lost $196 million in Cuyahoga County in the current budget that we're under. So to think that, you know, some local governments in some school districts are actually kind of celebrating the notion they weren't cut as severely in the current budget, but it's important to keep in mind kind of the financial hole that we're trying to dig out of. Now, the other side of the proposed budget, again, so that's the expenditure side. The revenue side is the, I think, the more interesting side of the budget negotiations to be looking at because Governor Kasich has proposed increasing some sales tax items and decreasing the state income tax. And so he's trying to cover the revenue that he's going to lose with reducing the state income tax by increasing the amount of sales tax on a variety of items, one of which is charging sales tax for high school sporting events. So, and frankly, you know, we have a lot of volunteers and boosters that work the ticket booth. We're probably not going to charge you 32 cents on your $4 high school admission ticket. We'll just absorb that cost or increase. So again, there's kind of more paperwork involved in it on our side if that's one of the sales tax categories that gets approved in the budgetary process. But again, I want to share with you, and again, this is a tax shift on the revenue side. In the current proposal, the income tax cuts, the top 1% of income earners in the state of Ohio would receive a $10,369 decrease in the amount of taxes they're paying, whereas the average, where the, there would be an increase for the lowest 20% of Ohio income earners, and that would increase $63. So again, this is not, in terms of the revenue strategy, this is a regressive tax shift and not a progressive tax shift. A progressive tax would be the more you earn, the more you pay. The regressive sense of this is that with sales tax increasing, whether you are the wealthiest Ohioan or the least wealthiest Ohioan, you're still going to have to pay that sales tax to get into a high school sporting event. But if you're the wealthiest Ohioan, you're going to have substantial tax savings if this budget unfolds. So again, it's the revenue side of this that is more interesting because I guess, and this is kind of where I want to take this, if, for example, some of the revenue is adopted, but not all of the revenue is adopted, that means the total amount of expenditures are going to be reduced. So that's where the revenue side of how Governor Kasich is going to get this money is one of the more interesting things for the community and us as Euclid School District officials to watch to see how that unfolds. Because while our allocation is high right now for the upcoming two school years, if the revenue isn't there to match it for whatever reason, then there are going to be probably some reductions in the amount of money that the Euclid schools get from the state of Ohio. I would just add one other nugget, which is there are tax loopholes or tax credits, depending on how you want to look at it, in the state budget that add up to $7 billion a year. And if some of those credits who perhaps outlive their usefulness could be terminated, that could be one of the ways that the General Assembly could increase things on the revenue side. And I actually do have one tax break that I wanted to share with you just as an example. There is a tax break for utilities to purchase pollution control equipment. I think all of us would probably be of the mindset, it is good for utilities to control the amount of pollution they are putting into the atmosphere or our water system or wherever that pollution is going. But it's mandated by law that they purchase this equipment. So the utilities are actually receiving a tax credit for purchases they must make, and the estimate is that that cost is $17.3 million a year. So that would be an example of perhaps a tax break that was put into the budget to try to encourage utilities to make this pollution-controlling purchase, but then it became such an overarching public interest that was actually written in the law, yet they're still getting $17.3 million a year to make those purchases. So again, we will try to keep you apprised. It's a very complicated system, and, but yeah, we will let you know how things unfold and how it affects your Euclid City School District. Thanks.
Mrs. DeAngelis, do you have a student liaison report?
Yes, lots of things been happening this last month in Euclid schools. I'm just going to sum up a few things that's happened. Early Learning Center, they had Jungle Terry, and they also had a fundraiser at Baker Square last week. Arbor Elementary School is asking for help, the partnership with Giant Eagle Apples. Their code number is 5814. If you want to join for, to benefit Arbor, you can call 1-800-474-4777 and use ID number 5814. Bluestone Elementary, they had their 14th Annual Local Heroes Program on February 28, and I understand Superintendent Bell was there. They're having a family night the 13th of March. They're doing line dancing on March 21, and they are collecting box tops for education until March 28, which is a huge benefit for the school. Chardon Hills Elementary School, parents of kindergarteners came to Miss, I will apologize if I mispronounce anybody's name, I'm sorry, Mrs. Arizona's class, and went across, did the program Read Across America Day. Daniel Seals for the second graders, and Chardon Hills students award at the end of February for their hard work during the second quarter of the academic awards assembly for grades third through five. Chauvin Elementary School is hosting a game night for families March 12, and the third and fourth grade music students will perform a concert on March 21 at 6:30 p.m. The dancing classes, they had their dance on February 21. It was a fun event and very nice. I saw some of the videos and pictures on Facebook. It really came out looking like a lot of fun for the kids. They celebrated Dr. Seuss's birthday with a read-a-thon organized by Mrs. Mast. Central Middle School is holding a spring fling March 22, and on March 26, the Central National Junior Honor Society induction ceremonies will be held. And also, the girls' basketball team from Central is the Junior LEL Championships, and they've been recognized on Fox 8 and in The Plain Dealer. Great job, Lady Lyons. Forest Park Middle School, Student Council is participating in Pennies for Patients, a campaign from March 4th to the 22nd, and their goal is to raise $3,000. Euclid High School, next week is their Winter Sports Banquet. And also, Chef Dan's Culinary Bistro students went to the FCC LA Regional Competition at Tri-C Hospitality Center on March 2. Okay, I will apologize now if I mispronounce anybody's name. I really tried. Okay. Janay Hall won gold and is going to state competition in Columbus. The junior competitors team placed third overall and had a 50% chance of making it to states. That team includes Christian Parker, Kurt Colontano, and Beverly Peters. Great work too, Najare Sabalis, Jessica Yarletz, Jacob Henkens, Steven Slocum, Andrew Buckeye, DeJavon Moss, and Cajunay Jackson and Eric Alchen. Congratulations to Sam Lysy and Andrea Bartel on their performance at states in the swim, in the girl swim team. And EHS Stand Up visits Central Middle School and worked with classes on anti-bullying. EHS Girls Basketball played men's for district championships, but unfortunately, lost. We had a great season, and it was kind of sad to see it come to an end. This week is OGT Week for all sophomores. On February 20, Euclid High School was the host for the 81st Annual LEL Choir festivities featuring Bedford High High School's Acapella Choir, Cleveland Heights High School Acapella, Shaw High School Choir, and Euclid High School Choir Masters, conducted by Professor Robert Vance, a BW professor, and accompanied by Ann Wilson. EHS Drum Line and Flag Chorus performed at Richmond Heights Elementary School for Black History Month, and the Mayor's Breakfast was held February 20 honoring students for citizenship and excellence. March 2, six junior ROTC schools competed in a drill team at Penn Hill High School in Pittsburgh. Euclid was victorious and received trophies for the following events. Armed Platoon, Unarmed Platoon, unarmed exhibition, first-year squad freshman, and first-year color guard freshman. Maya Hill placed first overall in unarmed drill. Christine Jackson placed second overall in unarmed drill. Oliver Gates, armed drill. Brian Womack, unarmed drill. And Alex Wadley took home the academic medal for the 100-question test. Okay, upcoming dates in April here, save the date. April 11, 12, and 13 for Big Show, and this year's play is, musical is Hairspray. It's always a fun event. April 19 is the 61st Annual Scholarship Raffle being held at Lakefront Community Center. And Saturday, April 20, Friends of Euclid Football is holding the Night of the Races. So lots of things happen in the next couple of weeks.
At this time, are there any visitor comments relative to the agenda?
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. There's a video that I'll be putting together for us.
Hi, my name is Brianna Cunningham, and I'm 17 years old, and I'm a senior at Euclid High School. Just recently, I won an outstanding participant in the National Achievement Scholarship Program, which is because of my PSAT scores. I'm in the top 3% out of 160,000 other students that apply for this scholarship. I'm enrolled in the Cisco Networking Academy at my school, and I plan on being a network architect or network administrator when I get older. I applied to Stanford University, and that's where I plan on attending. This past summer, I participated in an internship at Rockwell Automation that was engineering-based, where I learned how to write the programming code for a winter bond. I've been running track for Euclid since 7th grade, and I just found out recently that I qualify for the state championship in indoor track for Long Island High School. I'm proud to represent Euclid as I move forward in my journey through life.
Wish Brianna good luck, keep our fingers crossed for her admission to Stanford. So I guess I have to go back to visitors' comments relative to the agenda. Hearing none, we'll go on to reports and recommendations of the treasurer.
Thank you. Item made as a resolution to approve financial data as submitted to the board, and I recommend approval.
So moved. Moved by Mrs. DeAngelis.
Second.
By Mr. Smith. Please call the roll.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
Item 9 is a resolution to establish appropriations as listed, and I recommend approval.
So moved. Moved by Mrs. DeAngelis.
Second.
By Mr. Smith. Any questions or comments?
May I make a comment?
Sure.
Thank you. These are actually new funds that we are establishing for various purposes. The first one is a private purpose trust fund. That's an actual classification of a fund. This represents the, if you remember, the anonymous donation of $30,000. Those funds came with no restrictions, and typically, when we get any money with no restrictions, we put it in the general fund. However, we obviously want to keep this separate for special projects, and this is the best classification for that. The second one is a, it's called Family and Civic Engagement Team. It's a local grant. Almost all of our grants are either federal or state in nature, and this is a little bit different. This is a community engagement grant teamed up by Mr. Schweitzer. And the third one is Limited English Proficiency. These are funds that we've gotten for a number of years. However, the money has always been handled at the county ESC, and what we would do, we spend the money and apply for reimbursement to the ESC. Officially, it's our money, but even though we don't take possession of the money, we should really be running them through our books. So this is just established as that, so we can do that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, could you call the roll, please?
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
Item 10 is a resolution to accept donation from, this is an annual donation from the Haynes Gift Fund in the amount of $500, to be used, $200 for the music department, $200 for the athletic department, and $100 for the Big Show, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion? So moved. Mrs. DeAngelis. Seconded by Mrs. Lysy. Questions or comments?
Just out of curiosity, are the Haynes, Robert, and Albert, are they former students of Euclid High School, and were they involved in athletics and the music department?
I don't know. I had a phone conversation with Albert Haynes several weeks ago, and I'm afraid I didn't ask him. I know they're, I know they always come to the Big Show. In fact, we supply them with tickets, and they often come to events at Euclid High School, so.
They frequent often events. We appreciate it greatly. Would you like to call the roll?
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
And lastly, item number 11 is a resolution authorizing membership and paying the dues for the Ohio School Boards Association, and I recommend approval.
So moved. Moved by Mrs. DeAngelis.
Second.
And Mrs. Lysy. Any questions or comments?
If I might just ask, is that, that's been a constant sum for the last several years?
Actually, 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 there's a decrease of $400 this year. Thank you.
Just wanted to make note of that.
Very good, Mrs. White.
Do you like to add decreases?
Yes.
Could you call the roll, please?
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
Motion carries for zero, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. And now we move on to reports and recommendations of the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, members of the board. We have some personal recommendations that we'd like to consider this evening, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Andrea Seliko, and before I do, I know she's going to recognize one of our employees who is here this evening. So, Dr. Seliko.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Item number 12 is a resolution considering the certified staff for the 2012-13 school year, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion? So moved. Moved by Mrs. DeAngelis.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Lysy. Call the roll. Oh, any, sorry, any questions or comments?
Mrs. Sudar, one comment, and that is that in this resolution, we have two retirements, being Mrs. McClave, W. McClave, and Mr. John Lanice, who are both second-grade teachers at Chardon Hills Elementary, and between the two of them have over 70 years of experience and expertise, and I'm very thankful to them. They've taught many different grade levels at different schools throughout our district. So we want to thank them, and we will honor them later on in the year, but I wanted to acknowledge them at this point. So, thank you.
And I'd just like to add that both of them have done a great job and really been very, very beneficial to our district, and I just want to applaud their efforts also. Just sorry to see them both go, but I know it's, you know, they've got, they've got some commitments and things that they're going to do, but they've really been committed to the district, and I appreciate their efforts.
Okay, please do call the roll.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
Thank you. Item 13 is a resolution considering the classified staff for the 2012-2013 school year, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion? So moved. Moved by Mrs. DeAngelis.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Smith.
Yes, at this time, I have two comments. One, I'm very happy to announce that we have three of the four family liaison positions filled, and we are working on the fourth. We're doing some background check, as we often do, as we always do with all candidates. But I was pleased with the candidate pool, and every single person that we're hiring has a great deal of experience working with students and in schools and with different organizations that really will fit our needs, suit our needs quite well here. So I'm very excited about those three that will be joining us. And secondly, at this time, I would like to introduce to you our buildings and grounds specialists, Mr. Kishan McDonald, who is behind me at this point. I'll ask you to come over to the microphone here, and I'll say a few words about Mr. McDonald. He has various experience in the Buildings and Grounds Department in different, in various areas, and is, his most recent experience, that he has been responsible for as the YWCA of Greater Cleveland, the Middleburg-Southern location, he is, he was overseeing the $4 million renovation throughout construction, completion, and commissioning of the equipment and the warranty period. So that was something that I think you should be very proud of. Sounds like a large task. And in addition to that, Mr. McDonald was in the military, the U.S. Navy, for a couple of years. So we're glad to have him on board, and if you'd like to say a few words.
Madam Chairperson, board members, Mr. Bell, I appreciate the opportunity for me to serve as a building grounds specialist in here at Euclid City School District. I bring a lot of neat ideas to my job, and the three areas I have bought into is student achievement, fiscal responsibility, and credibility through transparency. As we look forward to working with my support system and changing the culture here at Euclid. Thank you.
And before he gets off there, because he did really good with those goals. I just want to acknowledge that he did excellent with those goals and that he has really hit the ground running. I just want the board to know that, you know, he did a really, really great job with getting the team together at Arbor when we had some superintendents in the building, and also looking at trying to, as he mentioned, change the culture, but also really getting people on board with a new way of doing business. So I really appreciate how he's just kind of hit the ground running. Mr. Higley has not allowed him to have a honeymoon at all, and so he has really hit the ground and done well, and I just want to just tell him we're happy to have you part of family here and look forward to all the success. So, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Does it call the roll?
Mr. Smith.
Yes, this is Sudar.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
Thank you. And item 14 is a resolution considering grant payments, and I recommend approval.
So moved. Moved by Mrs. Smith.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. Any questions or comments? No?
I just wanted, just before, Mr. Higley, can you just kind of give us an update? I know we're talking with the Firefox, with the installation and all that. Can you give us a, oh, we're not, we're not there yet?
That's the next one.
That's the next one, okay.
Okay, we'll call the roll then.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Lysy. Motion carries for zero.
Sorry to immediately jump the gun on you.
Should we put it in, in the play first?
Yeah. Yeah, what we've got in item 15 is a consideration for approval.
Do we need to put it in play first? Should we go ahead and pass it so that we can talk?
Take a motion.
Take a motion.
I thought this was under the superintendent as well. We have an approval and ratification of final payment, is that it?
Mm-hmm.
For performance of a contract from Firefox Incorporated? So moved.
Second.
Moving, Mrs. Smith. Seconded by Mr. Smith. How many, Mr.?
This company, both Miles and Fox Fire have, they've, they've completed the work as per the contract, and we've done our inspections, and the architects have done their final walkthroughs and found that there. They've completed as, as expected.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Higley.
Okay, call the roll, please.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, this is Sudar.
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
Item 16 is a consideration for out-of-district field trips. We have two, four considerations this evening. The first one is the High School Culture Club to New York City, and the, and then also the College Tech Prep Group will be participating in Columbus at the Business Professionals of America State Leadership Conference, and we're asking for approval for those two trips.
Is there a motion? So moved. Moved by Mrs. DeAngelis. Second. Seconded by Mrs. Lysy. Questions or comments? All right, call the roll, please.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
Thank you. Item number 17 is a consideration for the adoption of a policy revision. You recall, we had a first reading and a second reading regarding our bullying and other forms of aggressive behavior, but we left out the, there was a date component, date, dating education. dating education component that was left off of that particular reading, and so what we're asking for tonight is to skip the other two readings just to add that particular piece to it, because that's the only thing that would need it to be added, and so we're asking for that to be the first, for us to have the first and final reading tonight to add that particular language. And how that came about is that our Niola representative took a look, and we did not have it entered, he gave us the, told us that we needed to, to really make sure that that was a part of the policy, and so we're asking tonight to have that happen.
All right. Any questions or comments? Okay, we can call the roll then.
I'm sorry, we don't, we have to, we got a motion.
Oh, no motion.
I move.
Moved by Mrs. DeAngelis.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. Call the roll.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. And item number 18 is a consideration, if, I believe it was at the board mailer, we gave you all the job descriptions, revised job descriptions, and wanted you to review, and we've gotten feedback, we've made those adjustments, the necessary adjustments for those job descriptions, and so tonight, what we're asking for is approval of the revised job descriptions.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
Moved by Mrs. DeAngelis. Seconded by Mrs. Lysy. Any questions or comments? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, this is Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Superintendent, inform the Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, members of the board. The first informal item, and I'm going to have Mr. Ted Lysy go to the microphone to talk a little bit about the taking a bite out of the Common Core that we will be offering to our parents, and this is an opportunity which, what we're going to do is give parents an opportunity to learn a little bit about the Common Core, and I'm going to ask Mr. Lysy to talk briefly about what that opportunity consists of.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Bell. On Wednesday, March 27th, at 6:30, we are holding our, the one of two Take a Bite Out of the Common Core workshops for parents. We have three outcomes for these, these sessions. One, is we want to inform parents of the changes that they can expect to see with their, with the new Common Core standards coming. Two, what they can do at home to support them, and then three, we want to provide them with some resources to take with them, so that they can, they can go home and be armed with the right tools to help, to help their children with this transition into the new Common Core standards. So again, it's Wednesday, March 27th, 6:30 to 7:30 at Arbor Elementary. Chef Dan will be providing us some snacks, we will have childcare available, and we're asking that any parent who, who is going to come, we'd like them to RSVP through the Curriculum Secretary, Diane Iosu, at 216-797-2985, so that we can determine what, what grade level students will be represented, because we have some, some resources we're building for the parents that night to, that will match the child's grade level. We'll be doing a secondary session for, for students in grades K, for parents who have children in grades 6 through 12 on April 24th at Bluestone, from 6:30 to 7:30. So, two nights, and those are up on the website and up on Facebook as well.
Thank you, Mr. Lysy. And just to remind members of the board, one of the things that we talked about at our 90-day meeting was to have opportunities for our parents to learn about Common Core and to learn about how they might be able to support, and this is one of those efforts, one of our efforts, one of many efforts that we will have, to engage our community and how they can connect, and as you know, the Common Core state standards and national standards will occur with the beginning of the 14th school year, so we want to get ahead of the curve and make sure that our parents are able to support students. I appreciate what Mr. Lysy and the team is doing to engage parents and help us to be able to do that, so thank you for that. The other item that I have for the, for the board is just to remind the board that we will have our next work session is April 15th, Monday. We've got, with spring break and board meeting at the end of the month, trying to fit that in, it'll be April 15th, and we'll work through the agenda, but I want to make sure you have that date on the calendar. Okay, and that concludes my remarks, Madam Vice President and members of the board.
Great. Any petitions, communications of petition?
We do have one communication that I will pass out to the board. This is a, you have to have Mr. Lanice's resignation earlier this evening. This is a letter addressed to the board, both resignation letter and a letter of appreciation.
Okay. Thank you. Any new business or old business?
No.
No. Board members inform.
I just have one thing, I'd like to compliment the Varsity Corral for a very, very, very enjoyable season. I had the opportunity to, to watch them several times, and I'm still humming some of the songs these past weeks. So they made a very big impression. I'm sure Mrs. DeAngelis will be informing everybody as to our spring concert season that's coming up. We'll have our, our high school band and orchestra and our vocal music, and I really encourage everybody to attend, as well as the big show. And as she had mentioned, the 61st Annual PTA Scholarship Dance is on the April 19th at the Lakeshore Community Center. There will be flyers around town, but if you're interested in tickets, you can actually call me at 216-486-5987. There'll be plenty of opportunities, I'm sure, in school, your children's buildings to purchase tickets to support that event.
Could I just add one thing, too? The Varsity Corral will be very, very busy.
Yep, I was just going to add that.